Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Walnut Creek City Council Forum, brought to you by the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. I'm Bob Linsheid. I have the pleasure of serving as the president and CEO of the organization, where our basic mission is to foster a climate where business can thrive. This forum is a valuable opportunity for our business community to engage with the candidates running for the upcoming November election. You all are aware we have an election coming in November. It's real important for this, this community. You will notice at your seat, there is a flyer promoting the Business Needs Assessment Survey that we're conducting with our friends at Walnut Creek Downtown and Diabla Magazine. If you haven't had a chance to respond to the survey, please upload that on your, with the QR code and respond. One special announcement, on Saturday, September 14th, at 1:00, next door at the Civic Park, the city of Walnut Creek is going to honor Emmett Elor, who is the gold medalist in wrestling, freestyle wrestling. It's an exciting opportunity to recognize one of our own, and I wanted to make sure that we announce that today. I'm delighted now to introduce our moderator for the event, Angela De La Huse Ashley. Angela is the founder of DLHA Law Group, a well-respected law firm here in Walnut Creek, with a distinguished track record of service for our community. She has served as a past chair of the chamber, and she's an active member of the current executive committee, serving as vice chair of economic development. She also chairs the Shadelands Property Owners Business Improvement District Steering Committee, and among many other community contributions. So help me welcome Angela.
Well, thank you, Bob, and good morning, everybody. I'm honored to be a part of this process. It's exciting, and I look forward to hearing from each of the candidates. As Bob said, I'm a board member, serving on the executive committee for the chamber, and I also serve on the East Bay Jobs Political Action Committee, where we had an opportunity to meet, meet each of the candidates and hear from them, who chose to participate, and we got to know a little bit more about their positions. I'll explain the process to you in a bit, and then we can get started. The purpose of today's forum will be to hear more about each of the candidates for city council, but also to dig into some of the deeper issues facing our city, its growth and vitality, and see the candidates' perspective on each of those issues. For candidates that already serve on the council, we will ask their perspective on how things are going, and their present and future goals. Before we start, I'd like to thank the organizers of the forum, the Walnut Creek Chamber and Visitors Bureau, the chamber's CEO, Bob Linsheid, for developing this new format and coordinating a robust interview process with the chamber to develop questions and areas of focus, and the wonderful chamber staff, who work in the background to make sure everything always runs smoothly. I'd like to recognize the public officials, dignitaries, and members of the city council who are in the audience. If you could wave, Mayor Luella Hosku, city council member Cindy Silva, city council member Matt Francois, Barbara Crockett, from Central Contra Costa Sanitation District, and I was going to introduce my husband, who's ABC News anchor, but I think he's feeding the dogs right now, so probably slide in the back at some point, Dan Ashley. Other dignitaries that may have registered more recently than yesterday, we welcome you and appreciate your presence. Let me go over the rules and the format for today. There was a random name draw by our political action committee that determined the order in which the candidates sit, and also the order of the first question. For the last question and closing, we will go in reverse order. The same question may be asked of a few candidates, but not all of the same questions will be asked of every candidate. Otherwise, the fifth to answer would have had four previous questions in which to prepare. Instead, we have developed a list of questions, so the process and the topics stay fresh, and each candidate has an opportunity to show how they can answer impromptu questions. We won't always go in sitting order, but there are an equal number of questions for each candidate. For the last question and closing, we will go in reverse order of how the candidates are seated, and each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question and introduce themselves. There will be a yellow card that Ariana will hold up, I think with 15 seconds, okay, and a red card that shows it's time to stop. We ask that you have bided the timeframes, please, so that the process is fair, and also to avoid me having to interrupt you, although I have five boys, so I have no problem breaking things up. After the candidate questions, if time allows, we will have a period of time for audience question and answers. You'll see little index cards on your seats. You'd fill out your question, hand it to Chris, who's right there, and he'll give it to Bob. And then each candidate will have two minutes to provide final thoughts or closing remarks, summarizing their platform. I don't feel the need to belabor this, but we ask that each candidate and the audience be respectful of each other and show forum decorum. At this time, I'll ask each candidate to introduce yourself. You'll have two minutes, like I said, and you can present your key platform points if you like. I'll show you the order. It's Brendan Moran, Kevin Wilk, Cindy Darling, Craig Deviney, and then Laura Patch for the intro. If we could begin, Brendan, please.
Sure. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, Angela, my fellow candidates, for putting in the time, and then, of course, all of you. My name is Brendan Moran, and about 15 years ago, my wife and I decided to settle in Walnut Creek, right down the street, and since then, we've launched two small businesses, we've launched three small children, and we love Walnut Creek. And as a dad, as a real estate broker, and as somebody who has developed his time and his energy and devoted it to the city and local nonprofits, for the last 10 years, I feel called to make sure that Walnut Creek can remain the city that I love. I have experience with eight years' worth on the Parks and Open Space Commission with the city of Walnut Creek, including two times as chair, and I'm currently the chair. We had a meeting last night. I have been protecting our open space, and I've been improving our parks with the city for eight years. I was the co-chair of Measure O, so I've done the work to get the votes, to help pass the initiative that's going to help finance Heatherfront Park, increase sports tourism, increase public safety, and improve programs for seniors and youths. I'm also the co-president of the Community Arts Foundation, and I am responsible for raising tens of thousands of dollars every year, so that everyone can experience arts education at the Center for Community Arts at Shadelands. Like I said, I'm a small business owner. I own a real estate brokerage. I'm on the support team for my wife's small business, which is a children's theater academy, which is locally, and I am somebody who's called to make sure that we can keep Walnut Creek the city that I love. My platform includes economic stability, public safety, and sustainable development, which I'm happy to talk about a little bit more when I'm answered the questions. And thank you much for listening to me, and I look forward to this morning. Thanks.
Kevin?
Great. Hi, everyone, and thank you for being here, and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this today. Since I was first elected to the city council in 2016, following eight years on the Transportation Commission, I'm proud of being a part of the change that we've seen so much in Walnut Creek in the last eight, 15, 20 years, and to be the leader in the county in so many ways. I went to high school here, and have since raised my family here, both children going K through 12 in Walnut Creek Public Schools. I coached kids soccer and baseball teams, or 20 teams over a dozen years. My mother still lives here. We're a Walnut Creek family through and through. My first term, I helped lead the effort on becoming a sustainable city, getting free Wi-Fi downtown, supporting affordable housing, local businesses, and raising the pride flag, to name just a few. In just my last term, and while I was mayor, we required all city employees to be vaccinated against COVID, banned flavored vapes and tobacco, started enacting a safe gun storage ordinance, and we protected patients and staff at Planned Parenthood with a buffer zone. We were the first city in the East Bay, and only the third city in the entire Bay Area to adopt this. Walnut Creek has been a leader in building needed housing and affordable housing, which I've consistently supported, and I've continued to help our businesses and have been involved with many new openings, events, and representing Walnut Creek whenever and wherever the opportunity presents itself. Public safety is paramount, and this is a top priority for me. We take all crime seriously, and I work closely with our PD and night-time businesses to ensure that Walnut Creek is as safe as possible for all residents, visitors, and businesses anytime, day or night. With the rise in hate speech and antisemitism, unfortunately, Walnut Creek has experienced antisemitic and racist hate speech right here in the council chambers and during meetings, and I've been a leading regional voice denouncing hate speech of any kind. I'll continue to look at my role in Walnut Creek as not just a specific Walnut Creek city council member, but as a strong regional voice, ensuring that our state and government representatives have Walnut Creek in top of mind for potential grant funding and support for businesses, jobs, and infrastructure. I'm committed to making sure Walnut Creek remains that great place to live, work, and enjoy shop and dining.
Cindy?
Thank you, and thank you all for coming. Anybody that lets Bob Linsheid set one of these, you just know it's going to be at 8:00 in the morning, so I want to give a shout out to the husbands of the world, who are home cleaning up the breakfast dishes, or those who fed the dogs before they got here. Thank you also for caring about our city. My husband and I moved here, and I moved here about 20 years ago, because great schools, great open space, welcoming, diverse, and economically really vital place to live. By trade, I'm a wildlife and fisheries biologist, which is a really weird thing to lead into local government with, but what it taught me through the years was how to listen to a diverse suite of voices and help people separate out their needs from their wants, because everybody has a little of both, and they're not always clear what's a need and what's a want, and then craft win-win solutions. And that is a skill that I use professionally. I now use it. My husband and I have a small business that, and we are chamber members and have been for years, and I've brought it to council. So during the years I've served my community, ten years on planning commission, and now four years on city council, we on the council, with my addition, have now really reached a great place where we're really all rowing in the same direction, and I think that is something that has led to great progress on public safety, economic vitality, and sustainability. We have great working partners now, the chamber, DRAA, a lot of our nonprofits, our schools. We're coordinating, and I think a lot of this is due to Bob Linsheid and some of the other folks who have great leadership, but again, rowing together all for the same benefit. I don't want to go into a whole bunch of detail about the different things that we've done, but I do want to talk about Measure O, because I think that personifies what we're doing as a community. We went out, we listened to everybody. Each council member had a bunch of people they had to talk to. We crafted something that met the needs of our community, focused on public safety, focused on getting the pool done, focused on sustainability and economic vitality, and now we have the appropriate oversight over it. So that's what I want to continue doing for our city, economic stability, public safety, and sustainability, working together as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Craig?
Hey, good morning, Craig Deviney. You know, thank you all for being here. It's an honor to be up here talking to you. I appreciate you getting up this early. I know myself, I got off work at 12:30 last night, so early morning, but again, appreciate you all being here, and thank you for hosting. So I'm rooted in the community. I've been living here for 18 years. I have three kids in our local schools, going to our, have gone through our public school system. My wife's a realtor. My parents live in Rossmore, and during this time, I've been an ER doctor, the last 18 years, at John Muir Walnut Creek. During that time, I've seen almost 50,000 members of our community during some of their most difficult times, so I think that brings a really unique lens through which we can see the city. I've also been a member of the Rotary. I've been a big contributor to Sustainable Contra Costa and involved in the Walnut Creek Education Foundation. And I want to talk a little bit about my history, because positions of leadership and high achievement are not new to me. It started when I was a kid in high school, and then in college, I was team captain and MVP of my lacrosse team, inducted to the, not inducted, nominated, I wish I was inducted, to the Hall of Fame for UCSB Lacrosse. And then I graduated with highest distinction from UCSB, went on to medical school at USC, where I also graduated in the top 10% of my class with highest distinction, and after going to residency at LA County, was asked to stay on as faculty. My first job up in North Bay, I was residency director, and then when I moved here to John Muir Walnut Creek, I was chair of the Disaster Preparedness Committee. So during that time, while raising our three boys, I've also been a developer, building multi-unit condo complex. And so I have experience, and I want to dispel the myth that we have in this city that the only path to leadership is through city governance. There are many paths to leadership. We've seen it throughout the state, throughout the country, and so I want to speak about today, safety, housing, and homelessness, supporting our small businesses, and sustainability, and thank you.
Laura?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having this forum. I'm Laura Patch, I use she/her pronouns. As your council member, I will bring a new perspective, informed by years of experience in our community advocating for sustainability, safe streets, and inclusive communities. I grew up in Arinda, but always felt like Walnut Creek was an extension of home. It provided a safe, vibrant place to visit and spend time with my friends. My friends and I love that Walnut Creek has become the commerce center of Contra Costa County. There's even more to do here than when I was a teenager. I want to continue that trend and ensure that the generation after me views Walnut Creek as a place to have safe, fun times. But we also need to ensure that my generation and those after me can afford to live here. I moved to Walnut Creek as soon as I was able to afford to, but it's a luxury many of my friends cannot afford. On council, I will work to balance three needs: fighting climate change, addressing the housing crisis, and supporting local businesses. I am ready to deliver results. I'm a Walnut Creek Transportation Commissioner. I serve on the board of two Democratic Clubs in the area, and on University of San Francisco's Women in Leadership Program. I have always been an active volunteer, serving time in AmeriCorps here in Contra Costa County and Alameda County, and I work with organizations like Walnut Creek Downtown, Sustainable Walnut Creek, and Walnut Creek Community Cleanup Crew. I even walked for Measure O. I'm running today because I love Walnut Creek and can't wait to give back. I will serve our community with compassion, transparency, and innovation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, all the candidates. Let's start with Brendan. Since the chamber is hosting this, we'll start with economic development. Given that the chamber is hosting, what initiatives will you propose to support local small business and encourage entrepreneurship?
Sure. Thank you. Well, as a also small business owner, I appreciate that question. I think Walnut Creek has done an admirable job of speeding up the process so small businesses can thrive here. They've done a number of things recently, which is streamline the approval process. The design review committee is advisory, and so we don't have small businesses applying for permits and design reviews, and then have to kick it back to committee, and then the city council, and then the committee again, all the while where, you know, they're watching the money run out, and they have to get new loans. As a small business owner, I understand what it's like to put your livelihood on the line and have a city government that needs to be in your corner. So in order to help small businesses, what I think we need to do is help the region as a whole, and that means bring in higher-paying jobs for people that can live and work in Walnut Creek. I think we need to look at different areas, downtown, the Golden Triangle, Shadelands, and recruit companies, whether it be maybe a satellite office of a larger Silicon Valley-based business, where they might want something in Walnut Creek, so people don't have to get in their cars and drive to the South Bay, or we have maybe a hybrid sort of a thing that we can do with the office space, retail, and housing, to make sure that people can stay here. And if they're staying here and spending their dollars here, then the small businesses, like the restaurants and everything else, are going to continue to thrive. So there's a number of things that we can do. I think Walnut Creek's done an admirable job. There's work to be done, and I look forward to continuing supporting small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, same question. What specific initiatives would you propose to support local small business and encourage entrepreneurship?
So Walnut Creek, I think, has moved beyond where our mindset was just 10 or 12 years ago, which was, we're Walnut Creek, we're the best city to be in the county, and so you should want to be here, and we're going to be reactive. We are the best city in the county, but we've seen other city centers open up, places like the Veranda in Concord, as well as the city center in San Ramon. We have to do more to be proactive as well. We have to really be welcoming to those businesses that are looking to come into the area. We've talked about things with the chamber before and other ideas that have come, like a concierge, where when somebody applies for a business, we have somebody that's on our planning team that is able to help walk them through the steps, because frankly, it can be an onerous process. We heard that when, when things come to the planning commission, they would have to bounce back and forth between the Design Review Commission and Planning Commission. We have ended that, thankfully, but there's still more to go. When an application is first submitted and it gets through the process, we need to be able to then expedite that and go through, rather than weeks and weeks of potentially waiting. A concierge can help to break through some of those areas. We have to remember that a lot of our small businesses are owned by people where English may not be their first language. Perhaps they weren't born in America, and they need a little extra help in understanding all the intricacies of what it comes to when you are doing business in a city, in all the different forms and where you're appearing in front of. It's not just like buying an available area or getting a lease and then opening up your doors. The other thing I think that we need, and having worked for Microsoft and Yahoo, and having to commute two and a half to three hours each day, whether it was on BART or down to San Jose, we should look at something like in the north downtown, the north area, like near Geary, along Main Street, where we could have potentially a 200 or 300 desk operation that could be for a large tech company, where we have this opportunity where people from all over the East Bay can come to Walnut Creek then and work. We've got two BART stations and freeway off-ramps. We need to take advantage of that.
Thank you. Some say that one of the impediments to business growth is traffic congestion, and it's one of the most triggering issues in Walnut Creek. I live off Ignacio Valley, so I'm familiar with it and the different hours where we get backed up, have to time my commutes. Cindy, what are some proposed solutions to reducing traffic congestion, especially during peak traffic hours?
Great question, and it's funny, it wasn't a question in 2020 when I ran the first time, but it's back. As all you know, as all you probably know, originally, the city was laid out with the idea that YVR becomes a freeway at some point in time, and that has not happened, and so our development pattern is lacking the access that was originally planned for. So what we need to do, there's a couple of different things we need to do. One is YVR needs to function as a freeway. I think of the rights and the left turns as off-ramps and on-ramps. We need to make sure we have enough of a pocket so that people don't back up onto the road. We need to continue, we have some of the most cutting-edge light timing in the state. We need to continue to refine that. We also need to look at other ways we can get people out of their cars. The Shadelands Shuttle was a great opportunity that the P-Bid put in out at Shadelands. It picks people up at the BART station, takes them to Shadelands, they have Wi-Fi on the bus, they could be tapping away. We need to find more things like that. We need to continue to look at our development pattern as we go forward to make sure we are doing smart things that aren't making the traffic worse, and we need to look at ways that we can foster work-from-home, alternative work schedules, things like that, because Ignacio is gridlocked during the commute hours, but there is still capacity during other times, so help people stagger their, their work times. So there's a bunch of things we can do. There's technology we can bring, there's changes in behavior we can bring, there's changes in development patterns, but it's, it is a complex and difficult topic, and I know it really impacts people trying to get their children to soccer at 4:00 in the afternoon. I used to scream at my children, "Get in the car! We can't right turn here in 10 minutes!" So it is something we are working on and very well aware of.
Thank you. Craig, same question as to traffic. How would you implement change to affect traffic congestion?
I think that speaks, I think that speaks to how we plan housing and how we plan economic development. So I think one of the models that we're seeing now, and I think what will be the model towards the future, is that areas of economic development need to also be areas where we have public transportation and housing. It's the biggest way to produce their carbon input, carbon impact from, from driving from long distances, and it's also very helpful for the folks that are looking for housing, they can find higher-density housing near places of job growth. I think that we can also connect our bike system and offer folks alternate modes of transportation, so that they have the option of taking electronic vehicles, increase our EV adoption and EV charging stations. And then I know that there's fiber going down Ignacio Valley right now, so timing the lights, smart lights. You know, one of the things we don't do as a county is we don't really coordinate between cities to address traffic issues. So right now, speaking with our county directors, they see the transportation area as more of an area of funding than actual coordination, and what I'd like to see us do is, for example, on YVR, it doesn't just serve Walnut Creek, it serves Concord, it serves Pittsburgh, so we need to be coordinating with other members and other leaders in other cities, and perhaps that coordination can take place through the county level.
Thank you. Laura, let's go back to economic development for a moment. What specific policies would you propose to enhance economic development, and what does that look like for Walnut Creek?
I would love to see some innovation ideas happen. I think that Walnut Creek Downtown, as an organization, does a really good job of having events that bring people to the downtown area, but I personally notice that a lot of them are around drinking and alcohol, and those are, that's how they make their money for holding those events, but it's exclusionary to people who don't drink, and as somebody who doesn't drink, you know, that's sometimes an odd moment when I'm volunteering with them. So I would love to see more events that maybe are focused on the activities as opposed to just the, like, come get a wine at the board and brush store. Also, in cities like Austin, we've seen really great programs that highlight small businesses that are women-owned, queer-owned, people-of-color-owned, to highlight where people can shop with their values, and I think that Walnut Creek is primed for something like that. So I would love to work with the chamber to see how the council can support that. So I really believe that the chamber is the experts, and I want to support any innovative ideas that they have and see how we can work together.
Thank you. Let's stay with you for one moment. We're going to switch over to safety and police. The role of the Walnut Creek Police Department is more critical now than ever. Safety is usually the number-one issue on many people's minds, especially lately. How would you continue to strengthen the relationship between the police department and the community?
Great question. I believe that if we bring back local beats to our police department, that will help foster a community feel, because police officers will get to know that the specific neighborhood that they live in, and know what problems there might be occurring, as well as being able to reach neighbors. I think also more police officers on bicycles helps, because it gets them out in the community, you can talk to them, they can see what it's like to be on the street instead of in their vehicles. I'm glad that Measure O has some funding for additional officers, so making sure that the police department feels like they have the support of the council and the community through funding is also important.
Thank you. Cindy, do you think some of the heightened fears about safety in Walnut Creek are justified?
It's a complex issue. We've gotten repeated briefings from the chief here in town, looking at both the violent crime and property crime rates, and what he, the numbers show is that there is a small uptick in violent crime that is concerning, beyond all shadow of doubt. On property crime, there's a downturn, and we are trying to parse through, is that a lack of reporting on the part of merchants, or is that an actual downturn? And I think it's probably a mixture of both, but we, so we need to proactively be working on both the property and the violent crimes. On property crime, we just did a big sting operation the other day, looking at shoplifting at some of our local vendors, because they lose so much money to that shoplifting. We gathered up a bunch of people, went down- lose so much money to that shoplifting. We gathered up a bunch of people, went down and booked them, and hopefully we'll, we'll get the word out that that is not welcome in Walnut Creek. On the violent crime, the aggravated assault and things like that, we have worked very hard when, for example, when the Rolex watches were getting stolen, figured out where they were getting fenced, worked backwards and found the people that were doing it. And we need to continue to be vigilant on those, those areas, and we need to make sure that people feel safe and are safe. It's a messaging issue, it's an enforcement issue, and it's something where we need to make sure that our Chamber members feel comfortable and feel like it's worth their time to report crime to us, so that we have a really good view of what's going on. One of the other Measure O things that we included was a crime analyst, and this is a position where they can kind of get into some of those data-driven numbers and make it something where we are following the numbers and carrying out effective policing.
Thank you. Craig, you're an ER doctor. What do you see as one of the biggest issues with public health in Walnut Creek? And what are your plans to improve public health and facilities in Walnut Creek?
Yeah, thank you. You're right, as, as an ER doctor, I, I have a unique lens on our social issues. They're issues that I see each day, like, I'd say homelessness is a big one, and mental health issues is, is another big one. So on the homeless front, I think there's two things that we can do. One is we can support local organization like the Trinity Center. It has a good model, in my opinion, that is trying to help people get off the streets. It's not as enabling as I think some of the systems we're seeing in Oakland and San Francisco that are more oriented towards passing out resources, like sleeping bags and tents versus actually trying to get people off the streets by offering them substance abuse counseling, mental health, wraparound services, social services. So I think that supporting the, that local center, trying to find something where we have an overnight shelter all year round, instead of just three months of the year. What that allows is, it allows law enforcement to have a place to take people or, or, you know, offer them a safe place of shelter if they're in front of businesses or homes, or if they're in parks that, that we don't want them in. And then on the enforcement side, you know, our, our police right now are underpaid and understaffed, and so we're, we rank near the bottom of surrounding communities as far as our police pay goes, and we've lost positions like, for example, homeless outreach program could have four officers. Right now, we have one, there's two, and one's injured. So there's opportunities for improvement on the enforcement side, too. The other issue being mental health, and there's a big gap there. I mean, I see folks every day in the ER, and we can put them on holds and send them to inpatient psychiatric centers, or we can send them back out for outpatient follow-up, not knowing when that will happen. There are organizations like the Three A Program, anyone, anytime, anywhere, but we really need to try to cover that gap in the middle, which is someone who's having an acute issue but isn't necessarily needing to be institutionalized.
Thank you. Kevin, let's talk about emergency preparedness. We all remember the trauma of going through COVID-19 and the aftermath. What measures will you implement to make sure the city is prepared for natural disasters and emergencies going forward?
Thank you. So I first want to touch on what we did when it came to COVID, and we had, we were looking at an economic falloff. We were at a $3 million surplus and overnight went to a $12 million deficit, and we turned on a dime. And thanks to our city management and city manager and staff, we're able to really help to ensure that Walnut Creek responded effectively as it came to economically. As it came to our preparedness, when I was mayor, I was the first mayor in the East Bay to require all city employees to be vaccinated. And that was something that we were able to do and helped to lead the way. Actually, when it came to COVID, thanks in large part to Rossmar as well, we were the highest vaccinated city in the county almost the entire way through the emerg, the, the pandemic. And I'm proud of that we had that reputation. It's something that, that we showed that what we can do. When it comes to the future, we're building a new center at, thanks to our Measure O funds at Heather Farm, that's going to be a whole emergency center. We have everybody that are, that are standby officers, that are officers in an emergency situation, as is our staff, as are we on the council. And this is something that we talk about this frequently when it comes to fires, when it comes to earthquakes. I believe that Walnut Creek is better prepared for an emergency than really any other city. We take this extremely seriously, and we have staff that are dedicated to ensuring that we respond quickly, effectively, and our police department is truly second to none in being able to ensure that we're able to handle any kind of emergency that happens.
Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about housing. We talk about the requirement to add and plan for affordable housing in Walnut Creek, which is relative to the word affordable, but it is a challenge. Brendan, what are your proposals or concepts to increase affordable housing options in Walnut Creek?
Well, thank you. As the resident real estate broker, I appreciate that question. So as I'm sure many of you know, the number that Walnut Creek has had to plan for, as per the housing element that state edicted, is 5,808 units over the next eight years. And of those units, fully half, if not more, fall into the middle to low to very low income, which essentially means multifamily housing. The state housing element is not going to be solved by building single-family homes, because it's just simply not enough land. So to that end, what we need to do is plan for enough units where we can have people living, we do not make traffic any worse than it already is. And that means putting the buildings where they belong, which is near public transportation, existing jobs, and other amenities. The city has taken state grants, federal grants, in order to actually make housing a little bit more affordable. The issue, though, is that, you know, and I see this because there are affordable units that are for sale in Walnut Creek, but they're few and far between. And when they do come up, my phone blows up from people saying, "Oh, my gosh, I saw this condo, it's $350,000." And I have to patiently explain to them that, "Well, actually, you probably make too much money in order to afford that," or the line is 45 people deep. So I think working with the city, federal, and getting more funds in order to help speed that process and make more units available, whether it be for sale, for rent. I know the city's done a good job. There's now, there's a couple different places coming up. As far as low-income and affordable housing, we have a few like the Riviera, St. Paul's Commons. We work with Habitat for Humanity, and I support those efforts as well. But it's a long road ahead of us, and we need to make smart decisions to make sure that the people who work here can afford to also live here.
Thank you. Laura, leadership always involves addressing competing interests. How do you balance the need for new development with the preservation of the city's character and green spaces?
Well, as an environmentalist, I love green spaces. They are fantastic. I believe that they also help fight the climate crisis, because trees and green space will lower the temperatures in our city. And as we continue to build housing, that's important. I'm a huge fan of infill housing, because that limits the impact on our climate. Spaces where there's parking lots that aren't fully used most of the time are great for housing and won't expand the city boundaries. I think that the city also needs to do a better job of incentivizing new builds to be green buildings, have solar panels, have wind turbines that could look like art in them, making sure that people live in multifamily complexes, have access to clean energy. For the impact that the housing is going to have, we also need to think about how that make, how we make a walkable and bikeable city. It's not just that we need to avoid transit on YVR, but once people live here, we don't want them to get in a private vehicle to go half a mile, right? They should be able to walk or bike or easily access that half mile if they are mobile and able to do so.
Thank you. Craig, you talked a bit about homelessness. What incentives would you encourage the city to adopt to develop housing that is affordable for essential workers like teachers and first responders?
Yeah, so I think the, the biggest challenge we'll face with housing is building the housing. And as we know, the city doesn't build the housing, developers do. Right now, we are not the, we are not regarded as one of the easiest cities to build in. And so I think changing that narrative is hugely important. I mean, 5,800 units right now with the cost of labor, with the cost of money, won't be an easy reach. And so the affordable part of that will, will make it more challenging, because affordable housing is more expensive to build. But I, if we want to get it built, I think the, the, the main thing we do is try to make that process easier. And I have that background. I've seen how difficult it is to make a, a project pencil, to make it make sense. I would like to see us focus, myself, on the more moderate end of the affordable, so that we can first house the folks that, that serve here, serve us here, like our nurses, teachers, firefighters, and police. So I, I, one of the things that, that I want to do is, is really look at the ways that we can make that process smoother. I've talked to a number of small business owners here who've wanted to abandon the project halfway through building, because they found it just so difficult to, to do that here in Walnut Creek, and that can't continue.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, how do you see the city's homelessness issue affecting business, if at all? And how do we see current strategies working?
This is a, it's a, it's a complex issue, and you can see that throughout the Bay Area. But we are particularly lucky here in Walnut Creek with the approach we have. I've been on the homeless task force since well before I was elected, and what we've crafted in Walnut Creek is a three-pronged approach to homelessness. We have, of course, the Trinity Center works very close partnership with the city, with our other nonprofits, as a place for people to go get services and in the winter to access the shelter. And that is a great place for the people who are ready to accept services. That's a challenge. So the next part of the program is the core team, which is a team of social workers that are through the county. They are funded by Measure O, and they, their job is to go out into the community and help the people that are living homeless, you know, living on the streets, underhoused, couch surfing, whatever, find them and help encourage them to come into services. Also, help make sure, like, when we have a heat wave, we do open up cooling centers, and it's important to find the homeless folks and help them access those, especially our senior homeless, which is unfortunately a rising group. The third part is the HOP team, which is set up by our police department, and it is both to work with the homeless, to help get them into services, to help protect them from crime. They are a group that is victimized on a regular basis. But also to get the message out. I always love, there's one particular member of the homeless outreach team, and he likes to get people coming off of BART, smoking a little whatever, and let them know if they're not here to be part of the solution, they just want to be part of the problem, they might just turn around and get back on BART. There are some gaps. We do not have day services on the weekend, because Trinity is not open then. We do not have a year-round shelter, and we do not have adequate mental health and drug treatment beds. Those are a little bit beyond the city's capacity at this point, but it's a, we're working.
Thank you. Kevin, what are some of the issues caused by homelessness that you see and that you think still need to be addressed, and how would you address them?
So what Mayor Protem Darling had just talked about is exactly what we put into place right now, but it, it doesn't solve everything. There's a mental health issue, too. And when people suffer from mental illness and they frankly don't want the help, our hands are a little bit tied. We will continue to direct them to different services, but if they're not committing a crime and they're in front of a business, we'll talk with them. If they are, if they are doing something, even something like smoking outside of a business, which of course is not legal in Walnut Creek, then we will have, then as long as the business calls our police department, they will come out and talk with the person. But we also do things like cleanup encampments. We don't want things to continue to proliferate. We want to make sure, yes, we have homeless, and, and our numbers, though, are much lower than you would think about when you hear of other cities. When I say that our numbers are like 60 to 70 in homeless, people see one homeless person in Walnut Creek and they think, "Oh, my gosh, we have a homeless problem." We're aware of who these people are. I've been so impressed with our police department. I've gone out with those homeless outreach teams. I've gone out in the middle of the night with them. They know every homeless person by name. They direct them to places that they can go. We know when the winter shelter nights are open, and I'm on record as saying that I would like to be able to support Trinity Center to have, if not a 24/7 service, at least seven days a week. I think that we, that is something that we can put and figure out a way to have that in our budget to help them, because homelessness is not a nine-to-five job or, or five days a week. It's, it's a situation where every single day this happens. And I understand, I was out there at a, at a business several times last week when I got calls from people at the Chamber, at the business, the landlord and the tenant, that there was a homeless person outside and they were disturbing customers going into the, to their build, to their business. And I can appreciate the challenge of that. We have to continue to work with them. Hopefully, they can direct the services. And mental health is an issue that we have to continue to, to help to direct people in those ways. We have 988 now, there's the course, the core service of the county, and that's something I think that we need the state to really be able to help with as well. But in the meantime, I think we need to do all that we can for the individual homeless that we see.
Thank you. Let's switch over to larger-scale economic development. Brendan, you talked a little bit about satellite offices. Do you have a plan for attack, attracting larger businesses and jobs to Walnut Creek while still supporting smaller businesses? And how would you grapple with that?
Sure. Well, I think to answer the first question first, what we need to do as Walnut Creek, and even, even a, a regional center, is find out why businesses are here, right? There's, there's a lot of good medium-to-large-size businesses which are here or are maybe thinking of coming here. Is it BART? Is it the downtown? Is it the confluence of freeways? Is it the quality of life? Is it the weather? Why are they here? Let's find that out first, and then let's use that information to go out and recruit businesses and show them all the improvements that we've been making over the last few years. The Shadelands, for instance, has done a great job making sure that it's set up to house the booming industry of, of medical and med tech. We have a successful track record of bringing in people who can support the hospitals and the cancer centers here, so why not bring more of those? So there's, there's opportunity to go, you know, not so much even nationally, just regionally and in the Bay Area, to make sure that people know that Walnut Creek is open for business. And at the expense of small businesses, we cannot do this, right? It's important to keep plugging away and supporting small businesses, because those are the real backbone of this community and why people want to live here. So it's a two-track approach. It's not either-or, but we can get the people with the larger businesses in, support the jobs, show them that the housing is a lot more affordable than in the South Bay, and at the same time, those people can stay and visit our restaurants and our local small businesses, and we can grow and raise both boats together. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, on that line, we know some businesses struggled in the downtown area. What are some concepts that you have that will help them survive, if any?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think that's a really big issue right now in Walnut Creek, is supporting our small businesses. And I know that right now, talking to our small businesses, we are not seen as the most business-friendly community. Folks have a really hard time opening. It takes two years for the average business downtown to open, and many of them are going out of business by the time they do open. I've sat on the downtown association meetings for the last year and listened to what the, the businesses have to say. And I've been there when the city's been there to hear what the response is. And the response has been more of a, well, from the city, what, what do you need, you know, just push us. Whereas when I'm listening to these small businesses talk about how hard it is to, to do business and, and how hard it is to get their businesses open, my thought is, well, I mean, wow, I can't believe this is happening. How can I help you? What can we do? So we, we brainstormed out for one of those meetings, and one of the thoughts we had was doing a, like a case study, watching, watching maybe two or three businesses in the area open, identify what the, say, eight or 10 hardest areas have been for our businesses, and then follow those, those areas through their opening process and go into the government and, and see, why is this, why is it sticking here? Why are we having these problems? Because what came out of that conversation was just people feeling heard, and I didn't hear any actionable steps. And so, you know, I, I've talked to people like Bridget Powers, who opened Smile Power Orthodontist over there. She was a year into opening, and she almost closed down and moved to another city. It was so hard for her. So I think that's, that's going to be a big focus of mine, is working on changing that.
Thank you. Cindy, same question. A plan for directly enticing larger businesses to come to Walnut Creek, but still supporting A plan for directly enticing larger businesses to come to Walnut Creek, but still supporting present mom-and-pops?
Okay, so there's, there's two different functions within the city. There's economic development and then there's community development. Economic development, those are the people that go out there and sell the city. And we traditionally did not do a lot of that. We rested on our laurels. We were just Walnut Creek and you come to us. And we, over the last probably five to 10 years, have really changed that model. We have economic development staff now who are out there in the larger development community, talking about Walnut Creek, talking about what we can bring to the table. And then when people do decide to open in Walnut Creek, they have been acting as kind of ambassadors and helping people understand the process and helping ease that, that, I mean, we had one of the economic development folks and I went out to meet with one of the restaurants and the restaurateur was really appreciative because the economic development staff had looked at how we were treating their traffic impact fee. There's two ways to calculate it. One was much cheaper. Economic development folks made sure they got that cheaper fee. So that's that part. Community development is the other part. That's zoning, permitting, all of that. I think a number of us have talked about the different things that we've done to change permitting and zoning. We have changed how the design review board operates. We've got objective design standards out there and we're also reviewing the processes. We had a great report from community development last week at the council meeting about the different steps that they're taking. We, as the council, gave them, here are some additional things we're hearing from the community. I think we have always had a track record. I I don't think that we dismiss the concerns that we're hearing. We understand them. We're working to answer them. We're working to make sure that our process is transparent, that it's possible for mom-and-pop two big corporations to see where they are in the process and help them through it. Great example, Toyota Walnut Creek approached us about a development agreement. The city spent a couple of years negotiating with them. We're getting six hundred new housing elements, keeping the dealership here in town and getting a lot of affordable housing out of the deal. So we are open for business.
Thank you. Let's talk about infrastructure and transportation. Kevin, what are your priorities for infrastructure improvements in Walnut Creek?
So first of all, what we've done in the last couple of years when it came to Measure O and being able to rebuild and have the funds now to rebuild Heather Farm Swimming Center and the and the community center there, as well as all-weather turf fields, like having coached for ten and ten or twelve years. If it rained on Wednesday, we were not playing that weekend in many cases. So now we have all-weather turf fields and lights and those are the kind of infrastructure things for recreation that are just great to see. It's going to help all of these next generations. As as we'd heard before, we also have the best state, the best-in-the-state signal timing on our major roads. We need to continue doing that. We need to move to dynamic timing as well because the infrastructure that we're looking at when it comes to how we can make sure people get out of their cars and have more public transit is going to be key. We talk about development. We hear about these state mandates and that goes along with how we can help to house people, but we also have to pay attention to climate action. And if we're going to put developments out several miles from downtown, for example, we need to have that infrastructure to get people downtown without having to be in their cars because otherwise we're just adding to greenhouse gases. We're going against our own climate action initiatives. We are, we are not helping necessarily the jobs-housing imbalance. And frankly, our direction has been to have more housing downtown where there is public transit. So when we hear about these state mandates for development, we have to have more of the infrastructure for for traffic and and the transportation. We have to have infrastructure to allow there to be stations like we're seeing at Shadelands with buses that are going throughout there. And the biggest conundrum is, and sitting on the Board of County Connection, is that first mile, last mile. People are still driving to go to BART. People are still driving to get to the public transit. What can we do to help with that infrastructure to get people from that last mile that they're taking public transit or either coming from or going to? We have to be part of that solution and that's the biggest infrastructure challenge that we have.
Thank you. Laura, what in your opinion are some of the challenges to infrastructure improvements and upgrades and how should they be addressed?
For the longest time, Walnut Creek has been planned to be a car city and that is because it was a tiny little suburb and it's not that anymore. We have a very large residential number. Sorry. And so we need to adjust our planning approach to transit and transportation and infrastructure. I was really excited when Walnut Creek had their pilot program with the Lime scooters as a way to get people out of their cars to for small distances. And then, of course, the pandemic hit and we never followed through with that after the pilot ended. So I would love to see that come back, especially if we can do it in a way that addresses concerns people have about where the scooters get parked. If you go to some cities like Washington DC or Montreal that have bike-share programs with designated parking areas, they succeed a lot better than just the kind of chaotic nature that, say, Oakland does with their ride-share programs. So I would love to see that. I think we need better, safer bike lanes. Getting here from the library, for example, I have a shared bike lane that then abruptly ends and there's no sidewalk and no bike lane. So all of a sudden, I'm just in the street in my little electric scooter and it's pretty dangerous. I do it because it's important to me, but I can imagine if we had a seventeen-year-old on a scooter, their parents are going to be very scared and tell them not to do things like that. So for me, it's shifting the focus of infrastructure from cars to how do we get people out of private vehicles into buses, onto bikes, onto scooters and other ways to share the community feel and not contribute to climate crisis.
Thank you. Brendan, what are your thoughts on improving and enhancing the focus on transportation, specifically public transportation and accessibility in the city?
Sure. Well, I can say without a doubt that nobody likes sitting in traffic and I think there's certain things that we can do on a smaller percentage level, like increasing flow, possibly smart signals, fixing the roads. But my conversations with people that know a lot more about this than I do say that if you're driving down Ignatia Valley Road and we've done these improvements, you might notice a small difference, but you might actually not. And by the time that the technology, which is very expensive, gets put in, it may be obsolete. So we have to make really smart decisions about what specifically we're doing in order to move traffic. But to the larger point is that traffic is a function of putting people where they don't need to get in their cars all the time, right? And that's a matter of putting houses and jobs centrally located, like, say, downtown, where the public transportation already is. I think public partnerships with the county or even possibly private partnerships, such as what we've done to bring the bus from Pleasant Hill BART to Shadelands is a great idea to show people that the first mile, last mile, if you will, if you get from work to the BART without having to get in the car. I totally support that. And specifically, what I think we want to do when we're talking about public transportation necessarily is, let's look at how we can make the downtown area more bikeable and walkable. I've always said, I think that there's a really good opportunity to just get over the the hump, so to speak, bike-wise. You can bike downtown, but it's it's patchwork right now. And if we could maybe figure out a way to make it where it's just all one big system, make sure that Los Lomas and WCI are connected via bike where it's a little less dangerous, getting across the main roads. And we make sure that people who are downtown can just leave their cars downtown for an extended period of time because they don't have to get in the car and increase greenhouse gases and make everybody's commute even worse.
Thank you. We've talked a bit about sustainability. Craig, what specific actions would you recommend to address climate change and provoke promote environmental sustainability in Walnut Creek?
All right, thank you. I think one of the first things that we can do is try to help folks into EVs by increasing our EV charging stations. I think moving housing and living closer together by offering higher-density homes near places of economic development also cuts down on the carbon footprint. We need to move to electrification, increased energy efficiency buildings, which means not only transitioning from gas to electric appliances during upgrades and remodels, but in the future, having fully electric homes that can be supported by cleaner energy like MCI or solar panels. We need to decrease the amount of waste that goes into our landfills and we can do that through recycling, repurposing, composting. Offer alternate modes of transportation to folks besides getting into their cars, so having a good public transportation system, connecting our bike system, which allows people to use their scooters, and transitioning to outdoor equipment that is electric instead of gas-powered. That that will be a cautious, slow process so we don't put a lot of landscapers in financial hardship because I I'm friends with them too and that's not an easy transition to make, but I think it's an important one for the future.
Thank you. Cindy, since 2023, Walnut Creek has had a robust sustainability action plan with clear goals. Since transportation is the largest single contributor to greenhouse gas, accounting for up to seventy percent of carbon emissions in Walnut Creek, how do we reconcile that with potential growth?
We have long recognized that bringing additional houses and businesses to Walnut Creek needs to be looked at through the environmental review process to look at what the environmental impacts are of that development and find ways to offset it. We, during the years on the Planning Commission, we did major planning efforts on West Downtown and North Downtown. We looked at, because those are both really close to BART stations. And so they went, we went through and looked for ways to increase the number of new units coming into those areas so that the people that are moving in there can use public transit rather than relying on vehicles. In one case in point, there's a couple affordable housing developments on Pringle, one of which was developed with just a car-share spot and no parking because the expectation is we were hoping that the people that would move there wouldn't need their own car. They could rely on public transportation and that has proven to be the case in that development. So we're looking at making sure that the development occurs downtown. We adopted, when we adopted the building code, we adopted a requirement that increases the number of car-charging ports to be installed on those new developments. We're looking at ways to include traffic demand management studies with new developers, new, so that they work with their employees to find ways to help get them out of their cars. There's just a whole suite of different things we do in the development process, linking the sustainability action plan to the individual decisions on each project. We have an opportunity. We are going to start redoing our general plan, which, this is a really wonky thing for me because it's how you plan for the entire city. And so we have a great opportunity, as we go through that general plan, to take our sustainability action plan, to take our housing element and put them together in that general plan and foster those ideas even further.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, same question as to competing interests of planned growth, residential or commercial, and the carbon footprint fighting climate change. How do you address those?
Yeah, this is something where we look at infill and because of we owe, the the citizens own the open space, we can't go out any further. Due to Measure A, we can't go up beyond certain height limits. I think we're going to have to look at some areas where we potentially, potentially modify Measure A to allow for certain growth limits in some areas that would make more sense. For example, the north Main Street area at the at the Pleasant Hill BART station, the height limit there is about forty feet high and these are all because they were set in nineteen eighty-five. And I, and when Measure A first came into effect, it was due to some of the eighty-five-foot buildings that were typically in the Golden Triangle. And so everything was frozen at that particular height, wherever it was in nineteen eighty-five. We have to change some of that because the only way that we're going to be able to to combat climate change is by having some of these projects that also can go up four or five stories and have more people in there where they are electrified, where we are having more EV stations and and not just charging stations that are EV, EV-capable, but EV-ready so that when people have their their EVs, they may or may not need two cars, they may or may not need two different parking spots. And so we separate apart, we separate the housing from the parking itself so that somebody may see, we don't need a car right now. We can just walk to BART or we can take a bus and others might need one or sometimes two parking spots. So that's something that we want to be able to separate that out, have more EV stations and look at some areas that we could potentially go a little higher than forty feet for affordable housing and new development.
Thank you. Brendan, what specific actions would you take to address climate change and promote environmental sustainability in Walnut Creek?
Sure. Well, I can only speak for myself, but I often feel that the the idea of how are we going to solve the climate change is kind of an overwhelming thing, right? There's a lot of messages out there. It can get jumbled. You kind of don't know what to do or you can, you know, feel paralysis by analysis. And that's just my my kind of personal take. So in order to get beyond that, I think what we need to do is show individual people the individual, simple actions that they can take to make an impact because climate change is a lot of things, right? And we can focus on energies by doing a few things right. And at the city level, we can encourage people to take energy audits. We can show them what the incentives for solar. We can help them reduce their water use, whether at home or with the landscaping. We can help them with EV chargers in the transition. You know, it's, it's coming up where you're not going to be able to buy a gas-powered car in California pretty soon. And so I think that the future is is not, in a couple of years from now, the future is right now. And we need to make sure that people can understand that the changes that they can make individually to make a greater change for the climate. We've done a lot of that at our house, solar panels, electric cars, low-flow drip. And I'm just somebody who, you know, is a normal guy. I'm not a climate change warrior, but I've had to learn in order to do what I can do and what I can promote and show other people that it's not an overwhelming burden, but it's something that we can take steps positively right now to take for the betterment of the next generation.
Thank you. Laura, as you're probably aware, there are state-mandated targets that must be met by 2030. The state has to be carbon-neutral, which is a tall order. What recommendations would you have to help Walnut Creek be a factor in reaching those targets?
So in contrast to what's been said, I don't think individual actions are actually going to get us there. One of my concerns about the sustainability action plan as it's passed is it does focus a lot on what individual homeowners can do to lower their carbon emissions. But depending on what source you look at, either fifty percent or sixty percent of Walnut Creek residents live in multifamily homes and a lot of those are already constructed homes. I'm one of those and I can't easily put in an EV charger. I can't put solar panels on my roof because I don't own my roof. We need to, as a city, help those types of buildings switch and help them electrify already existing apartments and buildings where people live so that we can make a huge impact. Like I said, fifty to sixty percent of our population lives in those types of homes. So the city needs to work with those property owners. I also think that it's really important that Walnut Creek become a Tree City USA because trees will decrease temperatures by seven to nine percent. And as I'm sure, as we're heading out of summer, everybody's aware, we are having really record-high temperatures here in Contra Costa County and Walnut Creek is hit by that because we do have areas where there is a lot of pavement. That is particularly taking place in the downtown area where we have seen an increase in housing. So if we're going to put people there, we need to make sure that it's livable. I have a lot more ideas, so if you want to talk to me about environmental aspects, please come up to me afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's talk about DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion. Cindy, what steps would you take to further promote diversity, equity and inclusion within city government and the broader community?
Yeah, this has been an important council priority now for a couple of years, diversity, equity, inclusion, and we've added belonging to it because it's important for us to have Walnut Creek. Walnut Creek feel comfortable, be safe, and be welcoming to everybody. We want everybody to live, work, and play here together. So there's a couple of things that we've been doing and there's places for that to expand. One of the first things that we did was make sure that all city staff, all city commissioners, all city, including city council members, take training related to implicit bias. And that's the idea that if you look at somebody, the lizard part of your brain says they're different and helping us overcome that. We've also incorporated a number of new training programs within our police force to help them develop a modern, healthy policing culture. We've also expanded how we recruited commissioners in the last go around to make sure that we get the breadth of commissioners. That's where we have now two commissioners who are probably some of the youngest ever on Planning Commission and Transportation Commission. We have greater cultural diversity in those. And the idea is that if you cast the net broader and make it feel comfortable to come in, you'll get more of those diverse viewpoints on the city commissions. The other thing that we've done is it's called a seat at the table. Our youth commissioners, who are all high schoolers, came to us a couple of years ago and they said, we want to make sure that we have a voice in city government beyond just what we do as the youth commission. And they came up with a great plan to add youth commissioners to a couple of the commissions. And we've approved that, we now have them on, and it's been so successful, we've extended it, they are now permanent members. So there's a lot of things that we can do, working on our culture internally, working on celebrating Pride Flag, Festival Cultural, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, making sure that there's a celebration in Walnut Creek for everyone.
Thank you. Brendan, how would you promote diversity, equity, and inclusion within the city government and the larger community?
Sure. Well, I have to say, one of the things I like most about Walnut Creek is when you walk around, whether it be downtown or over by Lurkey Park where I live, you are more likely than not to listen and hear another language other than English being spoken. And if you're paying attention, there's a number of different types of languages too. It's not just you walk down the street and, oh, that was interesting, I heard someone speaking Spanish. I mean, there's a well cultural mix of people in Walnut Creek. And having said that, that's not exactly the representation that we see, whether it be, you know, on the city council or commissions and so forth. And I think the city's taken some admirable steps. D E I is one of the five priorities, I support that. We've had a really good turnover in our commissions and I think it's been a record year for the number of people that apply to be a commissioner with the city of Walnut Creek, whether that be because people are more specifically engaged. But I also think it's because of the outreach to, to people of color specifically, different backgrounds that say, hey, you know, please join us, be represented. Because I think we can all grow and learn from each other from varying different cultural experiences. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, this is, it's on an individual level that we can make change, right? We all run into everybody, you know, a lot of small business owners here. I've taken steps to have on my, my real estate team and the people that are helping me with my campaign of people who are immigrants, people of color, to make sure that I can provide whatever small opportunity that I can with somebody who maybe has had the means and the luck to grow up where I did and how I did, and to make sure that I can pass it down the road because I think that's our responsibility as city council members, as people who run the city, to make sure that we bring the people up with us as we grow and be representative of our rich culture here in Walnut Creek.
Thank you. Let's talk about education. Craig, how will you support local schools and educational programs in the community?
So how would I support our local schools? I, I think that having the schools be engaged in the city is important, so I think I would open opportunities for them to do things like, like have a parade for homecoming or something through the, the city. I'd like to see us support the cities by, I mean, the schools by finding home, housing for the, the teachers so they can live closer to home. I think we can help the kids that are in school right now in, in regards to the mental health issues that are, that are helping, that are really impacting our youth. So I think reaching out to school systems in that way is, is important. And actually, youth, youth engagement and, and sports and, and, you know, in the age of social media, getting kids together and, and, you know, playing on fields is important. So I think we could do a better job accessing and activating our outdoor spaces. We have, we have grass fields that go unused, you know, like People's Park here behind Civic, could be a soccer field where kids could engage.
Okay, thank you. Laura, how do you see the council supporting local youth in Walnut Creek and how would you approve upon that?
Well, I'm going to say, as a young person running, I think that the city does a good job of making sure that there is an area for kids by having this library, for example. I think it's really important that students have a place to go after school hours. I will note that the city council doesn't have much jurisdiction over the schools itself because we have five different school districts that manage the schools here in the city. But they do have some great programs that are operating with the schools. I'd like to see those expanded. I love the youth commission efforts that the city council has done in recent years. Our, the youth commissioner that sat on the Transportation Commission recently is just a brilliant person. Love to see them engaged. I believe that there's a little bit of an element that I've experienced as a young person running for office, that young people don't have the experience and leadership skills yet to take leadership roles. And so the more that we can involve them at a younger age, the more the city will benefit from those innovative ideas and plan a city that's prepared for the next generation.
Thank you. Kevin, what do you see as some of the issues facing the local schools and school districts? And how can the council address and support them?
So the first thing that, that I really became much more aware of last week was when I was approached by a resident saying that there are, there's a lot of speeding and rolling through stop signs, and she's a crosswalk guard as a volunteer in front of Valley Verde. I went out there, I was joined by, by council member Darling, I was also joined by some transportation commissioners and our staff. And what I saw was shocking, basically. We are having our kids walk to school, our students riding bikes, riding scooters, people that are driving are, are speeding along and rolling through stop signs at seven forty to eight o'clock, right when these kids are getting to school. But also a lot of the kids aren't paying attention to the rules of the road themselves. So we need to work with the schools to get the messaging out, make sure that parents are following the rules and, and all drivers in the neighborhoods need to pay attention and really more attention than they normally do because we also have the sun shining in the eyes at that time. But also let these parents know and teach their kids that they have to follow these rules. When our kids go to school, we expect them to be safe. We expect them to come home. And that is not just with terrible tragic school shootings that we hear from across the country, I'll talk about that in a second, but we have to make sure they can get to school and back by people being safe on the road. So safe routes to school, I think that is a critical piece that the, the city can work with the schools on, and that includes crossing guards. When it comes to ensuring the safety of our own students at schools, we've had school resource officers in the past, actually one at Los Lomas prevented a school shooting by disarming a student from having a live, active gun. And while we don't have SROs right now and the pandemic really put those off, we need to work with the schools to ensure that our city is prepared to respond immediately should any emergency there happen. That is the most critical aspect in making sure our students are safe from the time they leave home to the time they return home. And everything else that we do when it comes to involving school districts and how we can work with them is all supportive of that.
Thank you. I'm going to ask one question and each of you can answer. There are many likely reasons you decided to run for office, but often there is a single thing that happens or something that triggers you to decide to run. Can you pick one thing that spoke to you that caused you to run for city council? And let's start with Craig.
Yeah, thank you. So for me, I'm really about good governance and I think that, you know, what we do in the, the E R where we listen to people, we go into, I go into a room, I talk to someone, you form a personal connection, that person feels heard, you gather data, and then you make a decision together. You know, I don't make a decision for you, I make a decision with you in the E R. And I'm, I'm really a proponent of good governance and I think one of the things that's, say, triggered me to run has been watching the divisive political narrative that's been going on in our country for the last ten plus, maybe twenty years. And so I, I want to be part of that grassroots movement to reclaim the middle ground in our political conversation. I think there's a lot of room there. I think I have a lot of the experience talking to different people. I can talk to anyone that, that comes in the, the room of an E R, then I think I can do the same thing in, in the general public. And so I think that right now, perception is reality in, in a cer, to a certain extent. And the perception in the community, and I've been walking the community and probably already knocked on a thousand doors out there, and the perception is that sometimes folks don't feel heard in our community. They can't necessarily guarantee different outcome for decisions, but they don't like the process. Sometimes they feel they're being talked down to or that there's parents and their children and they're complaining. And I, I wanted to spell that narrative by going to the community, connecting with them, and, you know, representing the new movement in politics, which is a movement to the middle.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to Kevin and since you're an incumbent, I'm going to say, was there some original thing that triggered for you to run or is there something you feel really strongly about that led to your decision to rerun?
Well, I first ran eight years ago because there was a divisiveness on the city council and having been on the Transportation Commission for eight years, I really wanted to have a voice in helping to bring and coalesce the city together. I think that that's certainly happened. We are, we have five different opinions, but we all, we all want what's best for Walnut Creek and have come to find the common ground in all of this. We have a, a great collaborative council, which has been really refreshing for the last, certainly for the last four years. And then seeing what we can do as a client, as somebody who was absolutely making sure that we wanted to combat climate change, making sure that that was one of our priorities. It hadn't been prior to my election in twenty sixteen and now it's a mainstay. Combating climate action and having our climate resolution and upgrading our climate plan for twenty thirty is something that we have all now voted to approve. And this is something that, again, the fact that it's there all the time now for every year is a real accomplishment. The fact that we're also looking at what we can do to continue to help our businesses is something that I've wanted to be involved in. And public safety and making sure that people are safe downtown in Walnut Creek, that when I met with a council member in Oakland a couple of months ago, she said she shops in Walnut Creek because it's safe. We have to ensure to keep that safety and I work with our businesses downtown and our nighttime businesses to ensure that. But this time for rerunning has also added another component and that is personal to me and that is standing up against hate across all communities. We've seen it in our council chambers with antisemitism and racism. I'm working to get elected officials across the state to also stand up against hate across all communities, wherever it is. It's one thing when Jews stand up against antisemitism and it's one thing, it's something else even more powerful when blacks and LGBTQ and, and AAPI all stand up against antisemitism and we're all standing up against racism across the communities. That's incredibly powerful and that is a real prime motivator for me because I've taken a leading voice in the region in standing up against hate and getting my fellow elected officials across the region to also stand up against it. And that's important to me and that's why I'm running for reelection as well.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, was there something that served as an original impetus to run and is that the same now or is there something else that's changed to cause you to rerun?
So originally, the decision to run, it was kind of an interesting decision. I'd been on Planning Commission for ten years. I was like, oh, I've done my ten years on planning, I'm going to go off and retire. One of the last things I did was I helped Matt Francois on his campaign and went through the process with him. And sometimes those of us that are women, they say you have to ask a woman to run like three times. Well, with me, it was like a lot more than that. When I went through that process, I was like, I could do this. And then I looked at how the existing council was operating and I could see a role that I could play on that council that would take some issues and move them forward and help the council really get through particularly Measure O, the pool and the community center and get that going. So that was what originally drove me. I am, then twenty twenty happened and there's just all kinds of weird stuff that happened and I was like, wow, this is even more important now. And I went downtown the day after the big, May thirty-first riot downtown and helped clean up and saw the number of people in Walnut Creek who came out that morning with their brooms and their dustbins and helped sweep up the broken glass. And that made it even more important to me to serve the community. And now I want to see the things that we have started come to completion. I am really looking forward to ribbon cutting for the pool. I am really looking forward to getting to a point where D E I B is just part of our culture and we don't need to call it out as a priority. I really want to get the general plan going in a good direction. I just really want to continue to give back to my city and continue to see us going in such great directions.
Thank you. Brendan, for you, any single trigger or impetus?
Sure, actually I can tell you exactly when and where it happened. It was about ten years ago or so. And my wife and I used to live right down the street when we first got here, where we welcomed our first child. And we would come down to Civic Park all the time and then one kid turned into two. And we used to go here just, just to do something, right? Just to get the kids out of the house, out of the condo. And I had a moment when I would saw the kids, you know, on the playground, we call it the Star Wars park because there's a, something that's in there that looks like the Death Star. So that's our family joke. But there was a, it was something that just hits you, you know, in your life where you can remember certain moments, right? And in, in the moment, you're aware of what's going on and maybe you can't, you know, elucidate it so much, but there's a feeling that happens to you. That happened to me right here at Civic Park about ten years ago when I said, I'm going to do something here in Walnut Creek. And I don't know exactly what it's going to be. I'm not from here originally, I'm from Illinois, never didn't know a soul in Walnut Creek until I actually just got here and my wife convinced me to move. And so it was really important for me to, to put down roots, right? And, and make a name and make my community better, just in a, in a very simple level. And not long after, I, I got along with the city on the, the TV show that we used to do and was asked to join the commission for the parks and open space. And that's led to other opportunities and meeting people and growing into a leader and somebody who just feels like they're called to keep Walnut Creek the city that I fell in love with when I was at Civic Park with my kids, just pushing them on, you know, the swings. So that's my, albeit corny answer as to why I wanted to run for city council and, and be involved, but I would rather not be anywhere else.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's time for closing remarks. We're going to go in opposite order, like I said. Oh, Laura, I'm so sorry. Laura, I chucked you off, I'm so sorry. Laura, what was your single trigger? Sorry about that. And then we'll start with you for closing remarks.
Uh, do you have a problem? I don't actually have a single moment. My journey to here has been a little long. I always planned on being involved in politics. When I was in high school at Miramani, I was in the public speaking program and I decided I really wanted to be a political speechwriter because words matter and I think it's really important that you translate these intense, complicated policies into words that the average citizen can understand and follow. So I went to school, got a degree in political science, I purposely took a year off to serve in my community, then went to grad school to focus on political communications. And I was in DC when the government shutdown in twenty thirteen happened. And it disillusioned me about government. I was really depressed afterwards because it, it doesn't work. You had congressmen yelling at park rangers for preventing veterans from going up to monuments and that you don't normally have barriers, those are free things that people can access. And just the hypocrisy of it made me want to check out. So I switched into nonprofits and I was like, okay, I can serve my community this way. serve my community this way. And then in 2016, like a lot of people, I was pretty sad by the results because I did not feel like I was going to have the same rights that my mother did at my age as a result of those federal elections. And that has proven to be true. So I got involved again. And to me, it started becoming a, well, if I can't do anything at the federal level, what can I do to make sure that me and people like me have a safe community to live in and a world that's going to exist where they have the rights that they need. And so that's why I decided to run two years ago, and I'm running for the same reasons. I want to make sure that Walnut Creek exists for all.
Thank you. Let's start with you for closing remarks.
Okay, that actually leads into my closing statement really well. I am a different person, and I lean into those differences. I am a young person. I am a member of the queer community. I live in a multifamily complex. I use a scooter as my primary method of transportation. So for me, running is about making sure that our city council has a diverse set of voices. And while I acknowledge that we don't add a whole lot of diversity because we are all white running, I do believe that I offer a different lived experience than other candidates. And studies have proven that diverse teams actually make better decisions and are more impactful that way. So by being on city council, I think that I can represent voices that are not represented right now and bring a unique perspective so that when we make decisions as a council, it is representative and impactful for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, thank you. I think that what I would ask is, you know, what, what are we ready for here in Walnut Creek? Are we ready for somebody with some new ideas, a fresh perspective? Or for the business community, do we want to continue things along the path that they're on right now? It's hard to build. It's hard for businesses to open. We've lost our outdoor spaces. You know, businesses are struggling. So for the business community out there, I want you to know, you know, I'm here to help and I'm listening and, you know, that will be one of my top priorities. 28% of the businesses in Walnut Creek are in healthcare, right? We have no healthcare representation at the city level. So I think if we're advocating for business communities like Shadlands, getting businesses in healthcare and folks that can talk to them, I'd be a great representative from that standpoint. And as far as youth and youth sports tourism, I think that, again, I'd be a great representative in that capacity for our business community. Because I have three kids in our local schools. My oldest just graduated high school. So I understand the needs there and have some tremendous support from our families. You know, I'm only working part-time now. I have a history of leadership and achievement, but now I'm only working 24 hours a week. I work three eight-hour shifts. So I have a lot of time. I've put in the time over this last year, meeting with people, a number of you in this room I've met with, if I've had coffee with. That's how I started this process. I went out to the community. I started last fall. I started having coffee with people. I started watching city council meetings, taking notes. And my platforms evolved out of that process. So it really is, you know, a grassroots campaign. I didn't get here through city endorsements. I wasn't appointed to be our next city council member. I went to the community, found out what was important, and, and that's, that's the person that I am, that's who I represent. So whether it's supporting our kids, our families, healthcare, housing, dealing with issues of homelessness, sustainability, I think I'd be a great addition to our council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Cindy?
Thank you. It's been such an honor for the last four years to serve the community. And I want to continue to put my experience, my ability to listen, my ability to find solutions. I want to continue to put it to work for the community. I have the support of literally hundreds of my friends and neighbors, but I also have the support of Congressman DeSaulnier, Rebecca Bauer Kayhan, Tim Grayson, a number of others, including everybody from Candace Anderson all the way over to John Joy on the county supervisor level, because that's the person that I am. When I ran the first time, I had Dick Rainey on this hand, and I forget who the far left hand, but somebody said, if they have both of those endorsements, they must be somebody that can find the middle. I also have the support of our public safety officers. The Walnut Creek Police Officers have endorsed me. They feel that I am a great candidate to move forward and address the public safety concerns that we hear on the street. I have a great background in sustainability with economic development. I've done the work, walk to walk, talk to talk, with the years on Planning Commission, the years meeting with local businesses, helping them solve their problems. I think we all recognize that there is more that we can do there. There is a lot of permit streamlining work that I did in the past. I was at the state level, up at the cabinet level, working on permit streamlining. And we're working with our staff to incorporate a lot of those ideas into it. And then on public safety, we are, there's a lot more we can do. We can work with our schools on Safe Boots to School. We can do a bunch of work, continue to work with mental health. We do now have 24/7 mental health non-police response, which was a huge accomplishment. So I want to continue to take all my skills and abilities, continue to put them to work day in and day out for you guys, because I believe in Walnut Creek, we are the jewel of the East Bay, and we can continue to be that and get better, better and better every day, whatever that saying was.
Continue to get better.
Thank you, Kevin.
Walnut Creek has so many things going forward. It's the best shopping and dining in the East Bay, and it's a safe place to live. We've had our challenges and will continue to have unforeseen challenges ahead. But with solid and experienced leadership, Walnut Creek will thrive and continue to be the economic driver of the region. My experience of eight years on city council and another 14 on city commissions has been instrumental in ensuring Walnut Creek's economic stability during some of the unexpected downturns like the pandemic. It's also been an advantage in recovering afterwards and becoming the envy of most of the cities in the state. My priorities continue to be commitment to public safety, ensuring Walnut Creek is a sustainable city and fighting climate, climate change. And that means getting cars off the road because that's the number one impact when it comes to greenhouse gases and what we can do to reduce that. So that is huge. Supporting our business community and more high-paying local jobs and affordable housing and safe streets and schools. We talked a little bit about that. And standing up against hate and antisemitism in all of its forms. I've become a leading regional voice over the last eight years in the county, and I take that responsibility seriously. I go to statewide conferences. The endorsements have come out of that. Endorsements from Congressman Mark DeSaulnier and Eric Swalwell, Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer Kayhan, State Senator Steve Glazer, our dozens of mayors and council members from across the county, as well as the Police Officers Association, Evolve, a variety of different clubs. It's because they see me out there, because I go to events, because I am known as a strong Walnut Creek advocate throughout the region and for what's right. I have a common sense approach to the complex needs of our community and problem solving. Nobody knows Walnut Creek like the people in Walnut Creek, which is why I continue to fight for local control when it comes to potential state mandates. And I'll continue to be accessible to the needs of residents and businesses and be that strong, steady hand to help lead Walnut Creek into the next generation. This is the best city in the country, and you can learn more about me at my website. And I hope I've earned your vote to represent this terrific city for the next four years as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Brendan?
Thank you. Thanks to everybody for being here. Thank you, Angela. Thanks to the chamber for being such great partners with the city. I've enjoyed myself. I believe that I am uniquely qualified to lead Walnut Creek into the future. I have a vision of our community that is meeting tomorrow's needs while maintaining the character and the values that we love about Walnut Creek. I'm going to continue to be a strong, independent voice on the council, and I look forward to earning your support. As the only non-incumbent running, I am the only one endorsed by nine former mayors, city council members, city commissioners, business leaders, nonprofit leaders, Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer Kayhan, Supervisor Ken Carlson, the La Marina Democratic Club, the Police Officers Association, and 100 or so more friends and neighbors. And they support me and endorse me because they feel that I am the most qualified candidate in this race among the non-incumbents. My eight years on the post-commission, my co-presidency of the Community Arts Foundation, my co-chairmanship of Measure O set me apart. I'm somebody who works hard. I have a vision for Walnut Creek. I look forward to your endorsement and your vote in November, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Well, I wanted you all to get your closing in, but we do have time for maybe a couple of questions. One of them is split up. The first one is to incumbents, and we'll ask Cindy first and then Kevin. What policy decisions as a council member are you most proud of? And what policy decision would you take back?
Policy decision that I'm most proud of was the consensus that we managed to build around Measure O. It's not often that you get the Chamber of Commerce to support a tax increase, but I think we did a good job of laying out why it was important, what the accountability were, was. The thing that I am least proud of, you actually have to go back to the Planning Commission. We approved the Chick-fil-A on North Main Street without asking enough hard questions, and that is one I regret.
Kevin?
Measure O is absolutely at, at the top of the list, along with things like requiring our city employees to be vaccinated against COVID. While that wasn't a policy, it was a direction from city staff. It's something I'm very proud of, raising the pride flag and being more responsive to the needs of our community. It's not so much policy-based, but being responsive to all these areas when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusiveness, for example. And now, everything that we're doing is seen with, through a lens of that. For example, when we do outreach to the community for our commissioners, we now look at that and how we can appeal to even more people thinking about DEI. So those are the kind of things that we've given direction and that I'm really proud of. Again, the policies that we've done are important as well, and I do appreciate the direction that the city council has given. I think it's important that we want to be able to combat climate change and help the jobs, housing imbalance by having the housing that we are required to do downtown, throughout the city, be focused downtown where public transit is and where there is the infrastructure for that. So I'm very proud of those directions that we've had. In terms of something that, that I wish we hadn't done, I think that there, there are things that we could do when it comes to our budget that I think we can put a little more emphasis toward. For example, library, additional library hours, more hours of the Trinity Center is open, and finding ways in our budget that we can help more people. It's not so much reversing what we've done, it's amplifying other areas that we could do even better in helping homelessness and helping people that, that need it, and that we can do even a better job across the city in helping people that are less fortunate and even more affordable housing and those kind of things. So it's not reversing, it's actually taking, taking even more of a step forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Laura and then go down the line. So this is for the new people running for candidacy. What policy decision of the current city council are you most critical? And how would you have done it differently?
I feel like current is such a, is such a broad term. I'm struggling with that right now. Because there's, there's policies that might be 10 years old that I'd like to change, but I guess that's not current. Okay, this is, this is kind of a mixed answer. I'm really excited that the city council passed the Sustainability Action Plan. I'm glad that we have that on the books. But to me, it, it didn't fully address the fact that it is a climate crisis. And I really would have liked to see slightly faster timelines, more expansion on some of the items that are in there. For example, there's the leaf blower ban. Great. I know that that was a big win for the community because we hear a lot about them, but it is limited to gas-powered leaf blowers, where there are a lot of other small off-road engines that we could have tackled. It calls for small businesses and businesses in downtown to add bike parking, but it doesn't have any requirements around the city providing that. And I recently actually had an issue where they removed a bike parking near City Hall, and I didn't know where to put my scooter. It took me a little bit, and multiple emails to staff to figure out where the bike parking was. So I think it could have done more and been a little bit more aggressive to address the existential crisis that people are having around the climate change.
Thank you. Craig, do you, do you need me to read it again, or? Okay. What policy decision of the current city council are you most critical? And how would you have done it differently?
So I think when I look at the things that have happened recently and the areas that we could have improved on, I, well, I'll just start with one. I thought that while we did the pool, I thought it was a missed opportunity to really promote sports tourism. I thought we could have gotten a deeper pool and maybe expanded on the existing footprint instead of building essentially the same pool, the same resources in a, in a newer location. So I, I thought that was a missed opportunity. I don't know if putting in the Chick-fil-A was necessarily the, the wrong decision, but I thought the process, as was mentioned, I thought the process was not, not good. And I would have liked to have seen, spend more time talking to that community. I know that's how that, the Woodlands community feels when I, when I talk to them, when I knock on those doors and have those conversations. So I think there was a better process option there. I, right now, the outdoor spaces for our dining, I know the businesses are really hurting. I know we couldn't keep them forever without transitioning to something, but I, I don't, I don't think we did the best job of making those accessible to the businesses. You know, they're $80,000 to $100,000 infrastructure upgrade, and then we rent them, the businesses have to rent them back for $45 a square foot. I feel like the city tried to recoup all of its money on the upfront instead of really trying to activate those spaces, increase revenue through sales taxes. I felt like there's other cities that have done a better job of getting outdoor dining spaces. We only have one business doing that right now because it's prohibitively expensive. So, and, and the people in the city like that, right? So I, I think that was a missed opportunity there. Or, and then I'd say, I'd say police funding right now is an issue. You know, we're, we're 11 out of 13 for the surrounding community. We're losing experienced officers. We don't have our school resource officers anymore. You know, safety is a big issue. I, I have also been endorsed by the POA. And, and I think that, you know, we really need to prioritize making those folks feel needed and wanted and paid well.
Thank you, Brendan. Let me read it one more time. What policy decision of the current city council are you most critical? And how would you have done it differently?
There's not one specifically, but what I would say is that what we need to do as city council members, if God willing, I'm elected, is, is work to help spread the money around equitably. There's, there's parts of the city which could use a little bit more love in that maybe the Golden Triangle, the Shadlands. And I say that because downtown is a wonderful place to work and shop and live, and we need to bolster what we can bring to the downtown area. But more to the point, we can't do that at the expense of other areas where it's be the north downtown. I think there's a ton of opportunity that we could do with looking at the north downtown specific, the west downtown specific plan. If you drive back in the, the area between near Almond Shui, there's a lot of opportunity there. And I know that, you know, there was decisions made to help bring the developers in, but we haven't seen a lot of boots on the ground and shovels in the ground, so to speak. I, I think that it's admirable that we have allowed businesses to keep outdoor dining. I would like to see that path smoothed a little bit more, just so it's not so cost prohibitive, because that's one of the biggest things that helped us recover from COVID. And I know that people just love eating outdoors, so there's opportunities there. And more to the point is that we just need to make sure that it's an equitable amount of planning, especially with the general plan coming up, is that we make sure that all areas are equally given a bite at the apple.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for staying a little later. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating today. The Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau for Host and Visitors Bureau for hosting, doing the research, interviews, organization, and everything that is involved in making today possible, and the chamber staff, because it's just another opportunity to thank them in public, specifically Arianna, who held up the yellow and red cards, and Chris, who picked up the cards. Like to thank again Bob Lindstein and Matt Gushard, our chair. Also want to thank the Walnut Creek Library. What a beautiful and serene place to host these things. And Matt Bollinger of Save Walnut Creek for supporting today's technology and recording the session, and it's on the city's YouTube, so you can see it again on the YouTube channel. And I want to thank all of you for attending and caring. This is what makes the city truly a gem of the East Bay. And remember to vote. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, and thank you, Angela.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. Yeah.